At this time, I'll call order the June 7th, 2022 meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners. We have 6:00 PM we will start. So at this time, Madam Clerk, can we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we have a quorum.
At this time, I recognize the Shelby 17 Club, who's going to conduct the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Shelby 17 Club is pleased to participate in your meeting this evening. If you are able, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, help us to embrace and enjoy the life that you have given us to live. We are not accidentally here on earth. Each day we awake to breathe, you are faithful to meet us with purpose. We ask your blessings upon everyone gathered here. We pray for each of these county commissioners. Please instruct them, Lord, and teach them in the way that they should lead our county. Even when there are different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a united county of elected leaders and citizens. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll recognize any elected officials that we have tonight. All right, CNN, more at this time, we'll recognize any veterans that we have.
Jason Pauls, United States.
Steve Baggett, U.S. Army.
Eric Ex, Army.
Tony Hudson, U.S. Army. Lawler, he's got one of my counties, veteran pin. If you don't come up for it, I'll give you.
We had these pins laid up a few years ago. He's got the county seal with a veteran locker on him. Appreciate you, sir. At this time, we'll recognize any law enforcement presence.
Danny Hall, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Danny. And at this time, the Department of Heads.
Martha Thompson, Cleveland Harbor.
Carrie Mountain, Assistant County Director.
Jason Pauls, Development Director.
Me.
Josh Davis, Solid West Director.
Daryl Samuel, Electric Drive.
Debbie Giffen, Health Department.
Scott Oden, May.
Sherry Lard, Your Packs.
Tommy Bailey, U.S.
Thank you, guys. So Commissioners, before you have the proposed agenda, are there any items to be added to the agenda? If not, I don't hear a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? If not, all is in favor, we'll say aye. Those opposed, we'll say no. Right, this time, we'd like to recognize Employee Support Manager, Mr. Eric Davis. Dr. Eric Davis, who's going to come forward, say a few words about the Shelby 17. And I think you have some other items to take care of.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Thirty-one years ago, my wife Teresa, our sons, and I moved to Cleveland County. And it was probably one of the best moves we've ever made in our lives. We fell in love with this community because we recognized that the folks here cared for one another. A lot of compassion, a lot of love offered to one another. Thirty years ago, I began work as a chaplain in emergency services, not only for our county, but for the city of Shelby. And during that time, I recognized there were a lot of folks who were in need. I often responded to tragedies. And in those moments, I recognized there were people who had needs that were not being met. Some of those were financial needs. And so I always worked very hard to try and be able to help folks who were in need. I would often call on churches to help out with situations like that. And tonight, we are blessed as a county to be able to recognize a civic organization who has seen the need and has stepped up and has offered something very tangible to the chaplains of the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office. And that tangible gift was a $20,000 gift to help us to assist families, individuals who have met with tragedy and need maybe temporary. And Mr. Magnum, come up for us. Your certificate reads in recognition and appreciation for your dedicated service to the citizens of Cleveland County and the generous donation to the Cleveland County Chaplains Fund, which is entitled the In God We Trust Fund. So thank you very much, Roger. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Travis, thank you very much. God bless you. We appreciate you. We have a certificate for you. Lisa, thank you so much for all of you in the 17 Club today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
17 Club is honored to serve this community for the last 61 years. And our motto is building good citizenship. And, Mr. Chairman, that's what we do.
Thank you, sir.
We work with young people, we work with individuals in schools. But it is a tangible importance to us that this be a community of good citizens. And that's all the work for. Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, the 17 Club has a gift for each of the Commissioners this evening.
We're going to come down for a picture.
All right.
All right. Okay.
She's got pictures. Do what the women in your life try.
I'm going to have you get on the other side. You guys come down and kind of.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
Which is?
I'm. She's in charge.
All right, everybody ready?
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have a special presentation. So Mr. Davis, Eric Davis, will come back again. And this time, it's the employee support program.
First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to our county commissioners for your support of the position we know as the Employee Support Manager. I want to also thank the very caring leadership that we have. I appreciate Brian and Carrie and Allison for the wonderful work that they do. I do want to say this, and I mentioned it a little bit earlier, that when we moved to Cleveland County, we knew that there was something special about this place. And I believe it is that we really sincerely care for one another. And I think that that translates not only to the county government caring for the citizens of this government, but also the county government caring for their employees. And so I'm so thankful that you have the insight, innovation, the desire to be able to help employees where they need it most. I don't know if you realize this or not, but happy employees are 98% more likely to be able to identify with a company and its values and its goals. If they're happy, they're going to enjoy the place they're working, and they're going to be talking up that workplace. But also, in these days, especially COVID and post-COVID, we realize that a lot of our employees are dealing with stressors that are overwhelming. And so I think that it was so interesting that in a moment in my life when I felt like God was moving me into something else, the county was also preparing for something else. And that something else was this position we know as the Employee Support Manager. In that time that I've been with you since February 15th, I've had the opportunity to meet with a lot of different departments and a lot of different people. And those folks are just wonderful. I've enjoyed getting to meet so many people and also enjoyed being able to counsel with a lot of folks. Cleveland County really does care, and it comes out in ways like this. In that we are able together to be able to make Cleveland County a better place. Values like having high performance and courage and teamwork and integrity and innovation, they come to life whenever we feel valued and whenever we feel validated and whenever we feel appreciated. In just three months' time, I had the opportunity to meet on over 200 occasions with employees of Cleveland County, to talk over stressors, to deal with situations maybe they're facing. Sometimes, these are formal counseling situations where we're sitting in my office either here at the administrative building or in my office at home or on the phone, or maybe even just what I call sidewalk talk, where folks just come and they're just able to vent, able to share what's on their minds. And so what I realized in that time is there are a lot of people who are hurting, and they just need to have an outlet. They need to have a sounding board. So I appreciate you all allowing me that opportunity. I've got over 40 years' experience in ministry, and during that time, I did a lot of counseling. But now, I have the opportunity to really be able to reach out a lot more and help a lot of other folks, too. I also have had the opportunity over the years to be able to serve as a chaplain. I've been the chaplain for the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office for over 17 years. And then also with that, I've been the chaplain for our 911 dispatchers. And I've also been the chaplain for a little over eight years for our Cleveland County Emergency Medical Services and Emergency Management. So during that time, I recognized that we had a lot of needs. But whenever I'm able to come onboard and help all of our county employees, it's been a wonderful experience for me. During that time, I've been able to lead some training in what's called tactical resiliency. And in that tactical resiliency, I'm helping those folks who are in attendance learn coping mechanisms, learn coping skills. And so whenever they are under pressure, whenever they're feeling stressed out, they've developed a whole new set of skills to be able to utilize so that they can be better employees, so that they can be better husbands, wives, parents, sons, and daughters. And so that's been a really fun time for me. In that time, I've gotten to meet with over 180 men and women teaching those courses. Those folks have been from our sheriff's office, from our corrections department, and then also from our 911 dispatchers. My hope is to be able to work also with our EMS, teaching those same kinds of tactical resiliency skills. In addition to that, I've been able to pull together peer support groups and been able to develop peer support programs, which we're hoping to be able to take into our health department and also our Department of Social Services. And we want to extend that peer support group through our EMS, through our sheriff's office, and other departments within our county. So also during that time, we've been able to acquire, like we just recognized the 17 Club, acquire funding to be able to help our chaplaincy program. That's been a wonderful asset for us. We, as chaplains, have really had our hands tied. We've really been dependent upon our local churches to do all of the funding for folks who need the help. But now, we have this fund that we can depend upon, and that's been a great thing. There are a lot of great things that are still ahead for our county. I really believe that. I'm just throwing up some things about me. I've been able to go through a certified peer support leadership training, and now we're able to take all of that into these other departments, like I said, Health Department, Department of Social Services, our Cleveland County Sheriff's Office, and other departments. We'll do that later on. But I know that there are great things ahead for our county. I really believe that. It's wonderful being able to work with such talented folks. And again, we are blessed to live in this community. And I know that our best days are still ahead. So I want to thank you for allowing me to be able to come and talk to you a little bit about what I do. I wonder if you might have any questions for me? I'd be glad to answer any question that you feel that you offer me.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the board?
Not really a question, but we appreciate what you're doing, and we've known you before you've took this position, and always a pleasure to talk with you. And you have some unique insights, so thank you.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you all for laying with us.
Next item on the agenda is citizen recognition. Madam Clerk, would we have any names? Anybody signed up to talk?
No, sir, nobody signed up.
All right, move it on. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Brian?
Thank you, sir. Several items for consideration this evening. Begin with Item A, which are minutes from your May 17 meeting. Those minutes are included in your packet for review and consideration. Item B is your monthly manager's report. This includes all lateral budget transfers over the last 30 days, as well as some highlights from across the organization. A couple that I would point out is the transition to centrally administered EMS is well underway with Upper Cleveland and Shelby Rescue both fully consolidated, aiming for July 1st transition with Kings Mountain. I'd also highlight that Hickory Construction has begun grading on Shelby Building 4 out on RT Road. We're about 30 days behind with mobilization, but excited that that project started. Item C is Budget Amendment Number 61 on the Year from Travel and Tourism, request a budget $2,680 in donations from Lure Creative Designs, and that's recognizing participation in our County Visitor Guide. Item D from the Sheriff's Office, Budget Amendment Number 62 on the Year, request a budget $6,070, which is the market value of a 2010 Hyundai Santa Fe, excuse me, which was acquired through the state forfeiture property fund via court system, and we'll be auctioning that off. Item E, also from the Sheriff's Office, Budget Amendment Number 63, is a request to budget $73,255 in funds received from the North Carolina Sheriff's Association, and that would be used to acquire capital to assist in the investigation of internet crimes against children. Item F is Budget Amendment Number 64, a grant from Partners Behavioral Health, $4,850 to promote and expand the county's prescription drug drop-off boxes located throughout Cleveland County. Item G is from our Planning Department. This is a request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, July 12th, for case number 2217. This property is located on 110 Ware Loop Drive. Currently, the property is zoned residential. The petitioner is asking for a rezoning to neighborhood business with a conditional use. Specifically, I think there would be two single-family homes, as well as a commercial RV park located on the property. Again, at this point, all we're asking is to set the public hearing, and it would be set to go to the Planning Board in June. Item H, also from the Planning Department, again, a request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, July 12th, case 2218. This is 1622 Long Branch Road. The request is to rezone from light industrial to heavy industrial. That, again, will go to the Planning Board in June and come back to this board on the 12th for that public hearing. Item I is from our Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Annually, this report comes before the Board of Commissioners. This is a request to review and approve a buy-in budget. This is no impact on the county's budget. These are dollars in and dollars out. But the funding allotments are included in your packet for review. I'm happy to answer any questions about those. Item J is from our Legal Department. At your last meeting on the 17th of May, you began the statutory upset bid process for a piece of county-owned parcel, or property, excuse me. The parcel number was 43596. Reminds you that the county's total investment in that property is $3,924.80. The tax value is $10,786. And through the upset bid process, we have a final bid of $26,500. And the staff is recommending the board approve selling that property and putting it back on the tax books. Item K, also from the Legal Department, this is a request to approve a land transfer. 168 authorizes the county to convey property to other units of local government. We have a request from Cleveland County Water for approximately a half-acre portion of parcel 33309, which is in the upper end of the county. They have offered $3,500 for this half-acre parcel. We've reviewed the request and are recommending approval. Item L, also from the Legal Department, as you're aware, during the recent primaries, the referendum for ABC permits was approved. As part of that, the county must designate an approval process via SINE. Our recommendation via this resolution is to appropriate or appoint the county manager to be the final sign-off for suitability as people are working through their application to become licensed. Obviously, that would include fire inspections, environmental health inspections, and a variety of other county functions. And we believe this is the best practice after looking at other county procedures. Item M, and finally, to conclude the consent agenda, is from our Register of Deeds Office, and it is a request to appoint a review officer. Shannon Camp is the recommended employee, and as we've done in the past, this person would review maps and plaits before they are presented to the register's office. That concludes your consent agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board, you have been presented with the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion seconded. Is any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, we'll say aye. Those opposed, we'll say no. Moving on, next item on the agenda is the public hearing. Madam Clerk, can you read that statutory character?
After the public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the public are to be directed to the board. There are no comments directed at other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the chair recognizes a speaker for a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after the speaker has spoken. The original presentation by a speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal presentation will be limited to no more than three minutes.
All right, this time, next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the FY 2022 and 2023 county budget. So Mr. Epley, county manager's budget recommendation.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. I prepared just a brief summary, as you'll recall at your last meeting, which was three weeks ago today. On the 17th of May, I presented a much more detailed summary of this upcoming year's budget and our fiscal operations plan. Since that point, copies of the budget have been posted online, distributed, obviously, to board members and around the county for public inspection. And tonight, I wanted to run through a much more, a much less detailed modified version of what we presented last time before you hold your public hearing and ultimately consider approval modification or denial. First thing that I would point out, and I think that as a reminder, you know, we're certainly operating in very challenging times. It's not only a period of growth in Cleveland County where we're experiencing population growth and a higher demand for services, but it's also a time of rising cost. And when we evaluate this year's budget, generally a cent and moving into next year's will tick over $1 million. And just between three very easy-to-quantify cost centers, retirement contribution to the North Carolina Treasurer's Office, investment in prescription drugs that we provide for our employees as part of our self-funded wellness plan, and then a cost that most folks really easily understand is motor fuel costs going up. We're looking at about $1.3, almost $1.4 million of increased cost before we even begin the budget process, which is, you know, not quite a cent and a half, but, you know, has been absorbed as inflationary increase in cost to a business as we begin the budget process. From a policy development, I think that it's always critical to really align our budget resources with the Board of Commissioners' strategic goals. These five focus areas have remained consistent throughout this budget season, beginning back in February with your work session in which you prioritize specific deliverables in each of these focus areas. As we worked through developing the budget that you're considering deny, these were the priority centers that we tried to align resources with. As I mentioned, our budget season has really elongated and has been fluid, beginning all the way back in December with the Department of Head kickoff and what is the tone and the culture and what are the things that we're trying to accomplish, leading through January and February, where the board set more precise goals and was provided updates. A lot of strategy, a lot of meetings, and ultimately leading to where we are tonight with potential budget adoption. When I evaluate the FY 23 budget, as I've mentioned several times now, being priority-based with the Commissioners' goals, the highlights really are a commitment to our capital improvement plan. That really began all the way back in 2017 with the Facility Master Plan, and it's led to the fruition of about $162 million of ongoing capital, with the principal project being this Justice Center. And our board has really been focused on making sure that we're forward-thinking and proactively funding that project, including in this budget is year two of that surplus funding to our debt service fund of an additional $750,000, as you'll recall. In the previous year budget, in the budget that we're in now, that was a $1.5 million allocation. So moving into next year, it should be about $2.25 million surplus in our debt service fund, preparing for the debt proceeds that'll need to be borrowed to complete that plan. We also, one of the board's top priorities under the economic development focus area was really being, having a successful hosting of this Glock shooting match that's coming in November, some additional projects that we need to do out of the shooting range to get prepared there. The partnership with the school system to focus really on long-term planning, but also on teacher supplements, was part of our consideration. The Public Safety Strategic Plan is continuing to be drafted and worked through that encompasses all five functions of public safety and gives us a lens and a vision into what the next five years' needs may look like. On the backside of COVID, under the community wellness focus area, really starting to get some real traction with our community health rankings. We've had a real focus on population health over the last two years and disease management, but not necessarily on understanding what's driving our community health rankings and how we may move about improving those. And then lastly, one of the highlights that I would like to point out is for every year that I've been employed in Cleveland County, this board has stayed committed to really pursuing this concept of an employer of choice that includes modern policy, competitive pay, and making sure that we're providing career progression for our employees. As I mentioned at our last meeting, the budget process really starts with, you know, a fundamental understanding that needs in an organization our size and a community that's growing as we are will always outpace resources. So you have to have a good pulse on what your resource availability and capacity is before you start aligning those. And so a lot of our, a lot of our revenue forecasts are driven on economic indicators. And how the economy goes, so goes our revenue portfolio. So it's really important for us to get a baseline for how optimistic or pessimistic we may be in those analytics. And, you know, the good news is in Cleveland County, our economy has shown resiliency through the entire two, two-and-a-half years of. the entire two, two and a half years of COVID and the ups and downs. We've really seen some pretty positive numbers, including population growth from the last two years. In the 2020 census that was released in '21, we saw growth. And then in the updated state demographic's estimated population, we saw additional growth for the year that we just concluded. Residential home permitting, we know that there's about 3,600 new homes being permitted across Cleveland County. We're consistently seeing land development and land use revenues, rezonings and development there. Our unemployment rate has stabilized between 3% and 3.5% in consumer-related revenues, which is primarily sales tax, but a good indicator of energy and vibrant in the economy is up 12.5%. However, our optimism is often measured by reality, and the reality is we've also experienced an incredible increase in cost of doing business and some indicators in the economy that would really push us to be more conservative. We know that inflation is a real challenge. Year-over-year, we're looking at over a 7.5% increase in fuel prices, construction costs, labor force participation, which, you know, is an interesting analytic. That's anyone who's over the age of 16, who's a non-institutionalized civilian that's either working or looking for work would be our labor force. And you compare that participation to folks who are employed to the total population to get this labor force participation rate, and that's a little bit lower than we would hope that it would be, 61%. So, even though we're at 3.2% unemployed, which is a good indicator, and we're creating jobs, and even through COVID, we actually grew our labor force from about 48,000 to almost 50,000 jobs in Cleveland County. Labor force participation still continues to be something where we want to, you know, really, really try to grow that over time. So, all that being said, as I evaluate, again, are we approaching the budget season with an optimistic versus a pessimistic approach to our revenue performance? There's just a lot of things to consider. We want to make sure that we're being conservative enough to have a recession-ready budget, but optimistic with some of our economic indicators and growth in the community. All that being said, the principles for revenue forecasting were, you know, to continue, as I said, continue to be conservative amidst uncertainty. Certainly, we try to rely on data, be analytical in our thought process, and then diversification of our revenue sources, as we've talked about many times, is critical. We know that an over-dependency on the property tax or over-dependency on sales tax are often very volatile in periods of economic uncertainty, and that's why we've worked hard to make sure that our property tax dependency, as well as our sales tax dependency, meaning what proportionate share of our total revenue portfolio do those two indicators represent, are very favorable. So, in the midst of a recession or some type of economic correction, we still have alternative revenue sources that ensure that we can continue to provide services to our citizens. Moving into next year, our total property tax base is about 10.6 billion. The recommended tax rate in the general fund will remain constant at 54.75 cents. Roughly, the value of a penny will be a $1,025,000 next year. And then you can see the year-over-year change there at the bottom. Property taxes about 1.7 million. I mentioned the 12.5% growth in sales taxes about 1.5. So, across our major revenue sources, we're looking at about $3.7 million of additional funding moving into next year. The total general fund budget is $126.5 million. And as you can see, ad foreign property tax, restricted intergovernmental, and sales tax being our three largest functions. I'll touch briefly on our general fund and our operational budgets. Again, I'll touch really at a high level on some highlights that I know are integral to understanding the budget components. I mentioned the general fund tax rate is about 54, is recommended 54.75 cents. The school tax rate also recommended flat at 14 cents. This budget does not include any of the American recovery dollars. We have a spending plan, as I mentioned. We've presented that to the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office as well as to our auditors, and feel really good about implementing the allowable costs via the federal regulations with the funding that we've been allocated. But in order to create consistent historical comparisons, we'll bring that spending plan back to the board in a unique, in an individual way so that you can review that. Same narrative with this opioid settlement. We know the amount. We're working through drawing that down and better understanding how we may leverage that in a way that best benefits our community, but that is not included in our original budget ordinance. Phase two, I mentioned phase two of our debt surplus funding, $750,000, to make sure that we're being prepared to act on our capital plan. And then we have a three-phase approach to, again, pursuing this concept of an employer of choice as it relates to compensatory consideration for our employees. We have first, a living wage adjustment that I'll talk about more in detail shortly that really focuses on our lowest wage earners in the organization. We have organizational wide COLA, and then recommendation for continuation of our performance pay. And for the first time since I've been the manager, we're recommending 10 additional FTEs. Four of those would be in the sheriff's office. Those four deputies would primarily focus on serving warrants as well as participating actively in involuntary mental health commitments and transports. One employing IT, one in 911, one in emergency management. Both of those two public safety functions are derivatives of our public safety strategic plan and staffing models, one animal services officer, and then two environmental health officers. As I mentioned, $126.5 million budget. Here's the functional allocation of our expenditures. You can see 27% human services, 27% education and public safety. Those are your largest three functions, which is very typical of a county in North Carolina. And this optic literally demonstrates that of every dollar we spend, roughly 27 cents goes to human services, education, and public safety, and so on for the other functional areas. I thought it was important, as we talk about really leveraging, identifying, and prioritizing the Board of Commissioners' strategic plan, and I think an illustration of that is critical, and this is, there's probably not a better illustration of putting resources and aligning them with priorities than this. As you can see, back in 2015, only 19% of our budget was going to public safety. Fast forward eight budgets, now we have 27% of our budget going to public safety. And when you transition that to dollars, even though the total budget hasn't increased, as you'll see momentarily, there's been a significant change in the level of investment in that functional area. Over eight budgets, you can see here, $113 million budget in 2014, although we've been able to really invest into employees, although we've been able to invest into other things like public safety and our capital plan, we've done so innovatively and creatively without growing the overall budget. So, I'll quickly walk through each of your strategic plan focus areas. I'll start with physical sustainability. We do have, and I'll touch on it momentarily in more detail, some investment into our employees. I mentioned our capital plan execution. We have really some unprecedented and transformational opportunities to leverage some state and federal grant opportunities. Most of those are on the capital side, but there's some operational grants to them. That is a critical component of really trying to maximize our impact with the available resources that we have. At your February 2022 work session, the Board of Commissioners updated your fund balance percentage. As a percentage of annual expenditures, it was 18%. You increased that to 20%. I think that's very wise, especially during a period of rising cost. And we believe that we presented a budget to you that would be a conservative approach that would allow us to grow that fund balance percentage to that earmarked number. And then always trying to be, you know, this concept of reengineering, which is essentially more with less, rethinking, promoting innovation and implementation. We are always looking for ways to work smarter, not harder. Quickly on reengineering, as you can see on the chart on the left, over the last eight years, on an annual basis, we're able, we've cultivated and really created operational savings that equate to about $7.6 million a year. So, if you, those will be compounding. So, over a five-year period, you're talking about $35 million in either cost savings or cost avoidance. Moving into next year, we have five strategies. Of those five, four really have a very difficult time measuring. It's more of a perform and then react. But one of the five, our stop-loss adjustment, we use Blue Cross Blue Shield, who's our third-party administrator for our Employee Wellness Fund. By adjusting our stop-loss, it really reduces our administrative cost on a per-claim, per-member basis, and we project that we'll be able to reduce our costs by $300,000. Technology savings, that's really focusing on efficiencies with electronic timekeeping and with our ERP systems. We don't know yet, know how much we're going to save, but we know that we'll be able to operate in a more cost-effective way. Building consolidation, that's public health and DSS. I think it's logical to recognize that consolidating utility consumption, you know, insurance costs, those type of things. There's also some strategic cost savings that'll happen because of some depreciation allocations and indirect cost planning that'll go into that process. The public defender's office, that's, Commissioner Hudson and I talked about that earlier, well underway, up and running, and we know that that's going to have a positive impact on our average daily population in our jail, which means we feed less people and we have less laundry, and generally, that'll reduce costs. And then position justification, which is really the, probably the most transformational reengineering strategy that we've had since I've been in Cleveland County, and that's just saying, how can we leverage technology? How can we evaluate process redesign and really make sure that we're critically analyzing all FTE spots before we refill them? And we've been able to successfully do that over the last seven or eight years in a way that has reduced our headcount from 850 to around 750. One of the ways that we've been able to do that is, although we're aiming to reduce costs in many functions, we've continued to invest with a focus on automation, security, and citizen interface and technology. As you can see, moving into next year, we've got a tick over $800,000 program for IT capital and also continuing to invest into that operational side of their budget. Our approach to human capital remains consistent. It's a very simple message to our folks. We can be inefficient, have the most people, or we can be very efficient and pay a more competitive wage. And as you can see, the line graph shows the number of employees that we've, we have here Cleveland County. The orange shows our annual spend on payroll. So, as you can see, all the way back to 2019, really no total cost. We've been spending somewhere around that 37.5, $38 million number in total salary and wages. But if you divide it by the number of employees, that's really emboldened us and allowed us to be more competitive in talent recruitment and retention, which we ultimately think will lead to higher performance in our service delivery. That change, as you can see, here's just another way to see that. Total number of employees in the bar graph, average wage here in the line, but it doesn't change our total spend. The average cost of 1% COLA, which allows us to be more competitive, 2018, $357,000. Moving into next year's budget, $359,000. As I mentioned earlier, there is recommended creation of 10 additional positions in next year's budget, total cost $702,000. And each of these has a very critical need as our community's growing, as we're growing, as we're trying to do more in certain areas, things we haven't done in the past, to support the commissioner's plan. Also mentioned earlier that we have a three-phased approach to our human capital investment this year, starting with this living wage adjustment. And as I mentioned, that targets really our lowest wages earners in the organization. We have about 46 folks who make less than 150% of the federal poverty line, and we've created a, an equation, if you will, that incrementally moves them closer to that living wage number of $31,200. Then we have an organizational wide COLA and continuation of our performance pay. There is a modification here that I'd like to point out. On May 17th, when I presented the budget, again, in much more detail, we still have a three-phase approach, but there is a change in the second phase. Commissioner Hutchins actually asked about the timing of the original proposal, which was a 3% COLA with a 1% increase in 401K. And we have circled back. I've held several small employee meetings and really tried to get a better understanding of the impact of inflationary cost on their personal lives and the value, the perceived value that employees may see in a COLA versus an increase in their 401K contribution. Our original recommendation of a 1% increase in 401K was intended to reestablish Cleveland County as a leader in that retirement contribution market. Historically, we've always been the leader there, and that's really given us a strategic advantage and some differentiation from surrounding counties as we're competing for talent. But with the cost of living in the market that's increased, what I consistently heard from our employees was although retirement is really something that we want to focus on and want to get to, what's most impactful right now is the ability to pay our bills. So, we've modified that recommendation from three and one to just four. So, the total spend doesn't change. It doesn't add cost or reduce cost in any way. It just transfers the way it's been delivered. And then the third phase, as you can see, consistent with what we talked about at your last meeting, is continuation of our pay-for-performance system, which at this point is only being orchestrated at an organizational level. We have six qualifiers that, if attained, really create robust savings for the organization that's then reinvested back into our employees, trying to incentivize performance, recognizing that, you know, performance matters, and that's our, that's our goal. Over time, we intend to fully develop this system into, at the departmental level as well as the individual level, but moving into FY23, continuation of potential 3% delivered here, as you can see, in September and March, with each of those six qualifiers earning up to one-half of a percent. Our Employee Wellness Fund, I'm very pleased to report that for the 13th consecutive year, there is no change in the spousal dependent coverage. The plan will also continue to be 100% employer-provided. We currently have about 827 covered lives. It's roughly a $10 million fund. As I mentioned earlier, a third-party administrator, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and this covers all of our cost of biometrics, the wellness center, our HSA contribution, health claims, really comprehensive cost of running that fund. Moving on to public safety, the focus areas as we began developing the budget was continuation and completion of this public safety strategic plan, seamless transition to central administered EMS, working, beginning to work and understand what it means from a code enforcement perspective of a nuisance ordinance, the public safety campus, and then maintaining support for our volunteer fire departments. As you can see, we've had about a $29 million spend in public safety. If I compared this, and as I pointed out in May, on the 17th when I presented the budget, in 2015, your spend on public safety was 19 million, and moving into next year is 29 million. So, as I was talking about, the functional reallocation of resources without growing the entire budget, I think the public safety arena is really the most clear optic of how that's worked. As I evaluate volunteer fire, the recommended tax rate will be unchanged at 8.75 cents. The total allocation's about $5.1 million. That's about an $800,000 increase, all being paid for via the supplemental tax rate. Couple of things that are going to be improvements and enhancements from the prior year, we're able to move the paid daytime staffing from $12 an hour to $15 per hour, also providing weekend coverage on Saturday and Sunday, and increasing the per-call stipend as well. Overall, it's about a 12.5% increase, but again, all funded through that 8.75 cent tax rate. Under the community wellness focus area, our community health rankings continue to be the driver here. We want to, obviously, as I mentioned, be effective in our use of these opioid settlement funds, expanding our trails, and then implementing a long-term option to solid waste handling. And before I move on, just, I think that what's critical here is our health and human services are obviously the two leading departments under this community wellness focus area, and they've also been two of our highest-performing departments since I became the manager in 2018. When you look all the way back to, you know, over the last eight budgets, the county's proportionate share, obviously, both budgets are much larger than this, but we were looking at about 11.5, $12 million spend seven or eight years ago, and that's still what we are spending in those areas. So, I think that's critical to create budget flexibility, to allow us to have resources to apply, to trying to better understand our community wellness, health ranking, which has been the driver behind this focus area. And as I said then, although we haven't improved that ranking a tremendous amount because of COVID over the last couple of years, we do know a lot more. And as you'll recall, in our last presentation, we looked at things like premature death and obesity and access to care, and we have programmed strategies in this upcoming budget to really better understand and to begin to try to, really work on those in a meaningful way. Under your citizens engagement focus area, we have several partnerships that begin to explore, expand broadband. I reminded you that there was a ARDOF grant that was presented to you guys back in the fall that's, over the next five years, doesn't require any level of county investment, that will serve about 1,960 new homes, as you can see here in this green area. We've also allocated in the upcoming budget, a million dollars of our American recovery, it's not in the budget, it's part of our ARPA spin plan that you all have seen and that we will present at the appropriate time, but for the FY23 year, there's two other grant opportunities via public-private partnership that could add. The great grant would be about 1,200 new homes, and then this final grant, which is a more precise grant, so the cap grant would be like streets and roads that maybe only have one or two households on it. Both of those are competitive grants that require scoring. Both of those are competitive grants that require scoring. We feel very confident about our application, and after fruition of all of this, we think that the, there would be a very minimal, minimal portion of Cleveland County that isn't served with broadband, high-speed internet. Economic development, several goals here, one of which we're going to talk about briefly is, which is a sustainable partnership with the Fair Association. I mentioned earlier in your manager's report that we began the grading plan on Shell 4 over on RT Road. We're also working with, with the driving on-site development for the Duran Mill project for potentially Shell Building 5. So I feel like there's a lot of energy under the economic development focus area, and there's certainly allocated resources in your FY '23 budget to make sure that we continue the momentum that we've built over the last few years. 161.8 million dollar capital plan, all, most, all of these projects in the detail are included in your budget document, but all are in action, all are funded, all are moving forward, and obviously, the Justice Center at $140 million is the vast majority. Touch briefly on public education for next year. Our goals were, as I mentioned, to really focus on long-term capital and on teacher supplements for recruitment, retention, financial equity, and then obviously not impacting charter schools. I've shown here the last three budgets, and per Commissioner direction, property tax, and most of those revenue streams have been flat. There was a change in the, in the restricted sales tax capital last year, in which you created this Commissioner-controlled escrow. $700,000 was sent to the Cleveland County Schools for page-to-go capital, $750,000, which equated to 3/4 of 1 cent, was put into this escrow. Moving into FY '23, the only change is the local unrestricted capital will also go into the escrow, and then a reduction of $700,000 from the county contribution. The 1.45 of Article 42 restricted sales tax capital will be handled similarly to, as it has been in the year we're in. The escrow that that creates, we pro forma will create about, have about $3 million of resources in it by June 30th, here in a couple of weeks. Of that $3 million, there's about 1.5 being dedicated to teacher supplements and another 1.5 that will remain in that Commissioner-controlled reserve. 1.5 will, will increase teacher supplements from, by approximately 2%, and that'll get the, the school system to about a 7 and a half percent range. And here you can just see really the entire function of all revenue sources unchanged other than the $700,000 reduction in that local capital. So 29.63 million allocated for school systems, and as we've talked about several times, both this property tax and this sales tax are more performance-based versus fixed-based, fixed revenues, and that variability, any overperformance that they may have, would also fund the Commissioner-controlled escrow for future capital and supplements. I wanted to point out just a differentiation between total funding and cash flow, and so this blue bar, it shows per pupil, including your escrow, so including the dollars that Commissioners are putting into your escrow for future funding, our per-pupil funding for the schools next year, $2,429, which is an increase, as you can see a very consistent product here, but as a measurement of resources that are given to the school system to pay bills and fund operations, that cash flow has decreased on a per-pupil basis, and next year, going into FY '23, it'll be about $2,085 per pupil. Community College, 1 of 58 in North Carolina. Here I've evaluated the number of FTEs, which is essentially full-time students, compared county operations, funding as well as state and federal funding, and you can see from an FTE perspective to the state average, we're, we're in line with state and federal funding. Obviously, we know that over time, Community College has been really successful at private contributions as well as state allocations. It's really low, lessened the burden on, on county taxpayers to fund that operation. Our board's given us direction to better understand how we may become more competitive over time. We've identified 10 counties in which you can see how they compare to us from a population, a general budget, general fund budget size, an economic distress level, really their ability to generate revenue, because that gives us a good, the ability to really benchmark and ask ourselves, how much room do we, you know, really need to make up? How aggressive do we need to be? A couple of things that I'd point out, since 2018, county funding to the Community College has increased by 24.3%. The budget that we're in right now, that we're concluding, included a 17% increase, and moving into next year, total funding will be $3,587,820, which is about an 8.9% increase. So certainly, certainly, this board has made Community College a high, high priority and funded that adequately. Lastly, from solid waste perspective, it's about $11.9 million fund. We did ask our engineers to provide us a rate stabilization metric that included a 10% tipping fee increase for FY '23, followed by nine years of CPI or up to a 3% annual increase to really make sure that we're able to leverage and, and provide the financial assurance that we're required to, to the North Carolina Department of Quality for post-closure costs. We're all aware that we have a $23 million unfunded liability for, that requires us to close and monitor line sales for the next 30 years, and that is what we believe is required to adequately sustain that. We also are continuing to work through our life site permitting, which will ensure future cell development and that we do not run out of life at the landfill. Our citizen recognition system and our environmental code enforcement are two areas that will remain a focus, and then establishing a long-term system for solid waste hauling. And then we've also got dollars in the budget for community cleanup and convenience site improvements, really focusing on customer experience and safety. If you've been to our Grove site, that's the prototype, but we're really trying to enhance all of those sites over time. Mr. Chairman, that concludes what I have as a summary. Happy to answer any questions that you or anyone on the board may have.
Yeah, so, Commissioner, do you have any questions? I do have a few, but I'll let you guys go first. Anybody have any questions?
I do, but I can...
I've, I've got one. And back where we were talking about, we had 61% of the county employees working, that means a 39% not, and we said we got 3.9% unemployment. Can you elaborate on that 39% that's not working?
Yeah.
Because they don't want to work, they can't work, or whatever.
Sure, so I think you're talking about labor force participation rate, and that's just a data point that comes from the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it's essentially, again, anyone who's, not county employees, it's anyone in our county who's over the age of 16, who's in a non-institu, who is a non-institutionalized civilian, that is either working or seeking work as a percentage of the whole population. So what that means is 61% of our people who are over the age of 16 are either working or seeking work, and when you compare that historically, it's a little bit lower than where we would want it to be and where it's been historically, which is an indication of exactly what you're saying, is that there's not as many people actively seeking employment. And that may be a little bit misleading in an economy that's showing a 3.2% unemployment rate. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. So I want to talk about your allotments a little bit, or our allotments. I'm just, I rounded off figures, okay? So instead of, so we're large figures. It looks like in travel and tourism, we're, we're contributing 164,000 in that range to our travel and tourism.
Economic development?
Economic development, travel and tourism. And then, is destination Cleveland County, is that Earl Scruggs and Don Gibson together?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so there's about 76,000 there. We also have a lot of issues going on, like 25% of our children are in poverty, we have people, our own employees under living wage. So I guess my point is, the 76,000 is probably the largest tourism thing that we donate other than the 420, 425,000 we give the American World Series. And it looks like, from what I figured, we've given over $5 million since 2010? Would that be?
2011, yes.
2011. So just from talking to citizens, it seems like in that many years, we would, they would be a little more self-sustaining, and we're giving close to a half a million dollars when we have, like I said, children in poverty. And I just found out this past week, and it may not be quote the Commissioner's thing, but that we don't have SROs in all our schools. And after what happened in Texas, you can't say that wouldn't happen here. So I just think from a tax, you know, and the other thing was that we did sign an agreement before about looking to expenditures, so if a citizen come up and said, where's this money going, we could truthfully know where, you know, we could say it went here or there, and we haven't got that done yet, right?
That's right, that's right.
Okay, so that's not been done. So all that being said, I just want to make a point, because a few of us have been accused of not liking baseball. I grew up playing sports, I've played sports all my life, but I just think that that's a lot of money for one 10-day event.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's a question, but just, just to clarify several things you said that, that are true, included in the budget, is a $425,000 allotment to American Legion World Series, which is continuation of a, an intent that was established in 2019, and I think goes through 2024.
Now, it's 150,000 goes directly to, that's the rights to have the tournament, is that correct?
Yeah, 150,000 of that, we actually pay directly to Indianapolis, which is the corporate American Legion World Series entity. The remaining 275 is, remains local, and 75 of that provides for the seventh inning stretch.
Does any of it go to the local post-82, or do we know?
I'm unsure.
Okay. And do we know why the rights to it went from 75,000 several years ago to 150, or did they just keep increasing?
Since I've, my understanding is the national guarantee has always been 150. That could have, I, I'm not positive.
Yeah.
Now, beginning in 2018, when I became the manager, that's when the performance contract or performance agreement was signed, and the 150 began going directly to Indianapolis versus to the local office.
There is paperwork that shows when it first started, from 75 to 100, and then 150.
For the, for the national guarantee. The only other things that I would say, the other, the other questions, I didn't, I'm not, I'm not sure what part of that you want me to respond to, but...
Whatever you like.
But the, we do have our external CPA auditors. The Board of Commissioners did approve a policy for any nonprofit allotment funding, anyone the county provides more than $50,000 to, to have either their own external audit or to participate in financial oversight procedures. We do have that scheduled. They have to be done by our external auditor, external auditor, so we're a little bit subject to their availability and schedule. They are going to be in Cleveland County the second and third week of July, and so that'll include a variety of nonprofits that get that level of funding. So I'm not...
Which, which I would say, any, it's not just about this one, it is about the total amount, but we should check all of them. We should be able to answer the taxpayers when they say, you know, you gave X 50,000, or you gave X this amount, where did it go? And, and I, other than the 150, I can't answer that question for sure.
The vast majority of those organizations do have an audit done each year, and we do get a copy of that. For the ones who don't get an audit, they do provide us, as part of their request each year, a detailed line item of what their needs are and how it will be spent. I think the missing piece that you're pointing out is, have we double-checked that? And, and historically, we have, we've done some for our, for some of our nonprofit, specifically our volunteer fire departments, where we've done that in-house. But, but simply from a horsepower perspective, we haven't had the ability to be more robust with that. But we do get an allocation of how the, what the needs are and where, where it functionally is intended to be spent. I think, again, as you're saying, what's, what, what hasn't happened that is now going to, is following up, making sure that that's indeed where it went.
It's a lot of money that's not our money, in my, you know, in my opinion. So that's, that's just, I don't want anybody to think I don't like sports. I could support a, something in the range of what we give others for nonprofits, but I just, it, it's not about whether you like baseball, it's about what's right for the taxpayers. So that's just one make a point.
I have one other question.
Yes, sir.
Do you remember during our work session, and we had a company to do a survey of the activities we got in the county?
Yes, sir.
Going on?
Yes, sir.
Which one was number one draw for the county?
So we, the county contracted with a company called Tourism Economics. Tourism Economics is a, a national, really international consulting firm that evaluates economic impact. They've done NBA All-Star Games, they're a big company that's done some really high-level work. They evaluated five projects in Cleveland County, both Kings Mountain and Broad River Trails, the fair, American Legion World Series, and the Little, the Liberty Mountain Theater and Kings Mountain. And of those five, the, the, the project that had the biggest amount of economic impact was American Legion Baseball.
And I, and I, I don't have a problem with that.
And that was, that was, how much dollar figure draw did it say?
I believe it was 3.6 million annual impacts, Johnny.
Annual impact.
But, but, but that was, that's me recalling.
Yeah.
And again, it's not about that, it's about the, the this much, if you've been in, if you've got an event that's been in business this long, it should have some self-supportive sponsors and all, it should not ride all on the county, or we should be doing it through our own travel and tourism, if it's that kind of money. That's, that's my point, it's not what they bring in, it's the point of the amount we're
I, I had the same concerns, and I was pleasantly surprised to see the analysts come back and said that they actually brought $288,000 back in actual dollar-for-dollar taxes and tourism taxes.
State and local revenue.
So that, that was, gave me the, I can rationalize what we're doing because of the economic impact it has, but I have, I've got some of the same phone calls, some of the same concerns that Bibb's talking about, so. And I like baseball, too.
Well, one of the things I've thought about in this is, there's some things out there that's really hard to calculate what type impact we have. Our economic development team has done a lot of good work to get us all the industry that's come here, and there's no way of knowing how many of them were sitting on the fence, whether they come to Cleveland County or another state or another county in the state, and maybe one, one Saturday afternoon, they were sitting watching the ballgames and realized, hey, this is the community we're looking at, at starting a new plant. There's no way of knowing what type impact that is, but it's got to be some, some impact. So I feel like with the, the impact that, that they said we were getting, like through over $3 billion, then $400,000 a year is not a very big price to pay for that much
Anybody else? I think you guys have covered baseball well enough, so I won't talk about something different. So on employee pay, Brian, I'm a little confused, the last time it was 3% and 1% to 401K, I think all of us were part of, some conversations were, that's been increased to 4%. But I noticed in your slide in your presentation, there was no mention of the 401K. I thought in our conversations that, in the prep between the, the last, the first presentation of this one, there would be a contribution to the 401K.
The intent is January 1st, and if I didn't say that, I apologize. That, that is the intent. So it'd be 1%?
1%. Yes. Okay. Well, the slide said to be determined, and so I don't think that you really, I didn't get that from your explanation of what it was going to be. I wanted to make sure that hadn't changed before we vote on the budget later, that it's 4% to a salary adjustment and then 1% to 401K that's on our plan here, which will be January 1st.
That's right.
Are there any other questions? All right, if not, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the FY 2022, 2023 recommended budget, please come forward and state your name and address. Do we have anyone wishing to speak for or against the fiscal year 2022, 2023 recommended budget? If so, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name's Robert Williams, I live at 814 East St. Cove Trail in Boston, even though that's a long-delved address. I would recommend voting no on this budget. All this economic study that's been done, I don't believe a word of it. From 2011 to 2022, you can't pay for it yourself. I don't see it generating all these millions. I remember when the Earl Scruggs Center was in discussion. The Gardner Way of God Bowl School of Business calculated that over a 10-year period, that Earl Scruggs Center would bring in economic development at $220 million. I doubt if it did 10% of that, I doubt if it did 1% of that. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask, under the freedom of information, I So, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask, under the Freedom of Information Act, not the Freedom of Information Act, Public Records Act, for these records that you're going by, and I'd like to take a look at them. And I'd like to be, I'd like for them to be explained in more detail. And I heard Brian do a lot of hemming and hawing. Some things he said he didn't know. So, I would recommend vote no on that part. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the FY 2022, 23 recommended budget? Please come forward and state your name and address. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Questions or discussion by the Commissioners? With no discussion, I make a motion to approve the budget as recommended.
I'll second.
With that, we have a motion and second to approve the budget as recommended. With that, all of those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no.
No.
All right, next item on the agenda is the regular agenda. Mr. Depp will come forward and talk to us about the county fair. This is a three-part, three items that we'll be addressing here is the Cleveland County Fair lease agreement, performance contract with the fair association, and volunteer fire department lease for the Cleveland Volunteer Fire Department.
Thanks, sir. You teed up my first slide perfectly. I appreciate that tremendously. The, a sustainable new lease and new agreement with the fair association was imminent because our current one was expiring. We all know that over the last two years, because of COVID, we haven't had the fair, and I think that's really highlighted the value and the impact and the tradition that it's had on our community. I'm glad to see Alex, the president of the fair board here. He and I have worked very closely together over the last six months to present to you tonight something that the fair board has already unanimously approved, and I believe to be really a strong product that encompasses what the Board of Commissioners were seeking with that goal. We have three things that staff are asking Commissioners to consider tonight. One is a performance contract with the fair, and the other two are two very simple land leases. Historically, there's been one document that really tried to outline all of those that has, over time, became less than useful and outdated, and so we really took a start-from-scratch methodology. We've had multiple steering committee meetings with both county staff and leadership from the fair, and really started with, what do we both need? What do both parties need from this agreement? How can we better utilize and highlight the state's largest outdoor agricultural fair and leverage it as the economic and community and cultural impact that it is on our community? And I think that we've, we've been able to accomplish that. I'll start first with the performance contract and the lease for the fair specifically. The county's obligations are to lease that piece of property to the fair association for 10 years for $1, and then there's a physical appropriation of $62,500 for operations and $100,000 allocation for capitals in year one and year two. The fair's obligations are to hold a fair every year and to participate in the economic impact study that we just did, and it may circle back at some future time, as with all of our nonprofit fundings, as we just talked about, with certain other allotments, to agree to these financial oversight procedures, having one Board of Commissioner on their Board of Directors, and then participation in these joint operational subcommittees, which will really focus on the business aspects and long-term planning, facility planning, utility relocation, fairground enhancements. We also want to talk and make sure that we're focusing on living in the now, which includes COVID, and so having a health and safety subcommittee that is meeting ahead of time, not the week before the fair, and asking ourselves if there were flare-ups, or if there were, you know, what are our strategies to make sure that, you know, no matter what, we're able to successfully and safely hold a fair in 2022 and the years to come? And all of these operational working committees will be comprised of both county staff and fair staff. There's also, for consideration, a direct lease from the county. The land lease with the fair does, via survey, exclude the fire station that's there on the property. There'll be a direct lease from, with the county and Cleveland County Volunteer Fire Department for that particular piece of the property. That was a recommendation from the Department of Insurance, and that allows them to have a satellite station there that ultimately provides, within a five-mile radius, covers out to folks on 180 near Deerbrook, and reduces a lot of Class 10s to Class 6s. Two main elements of that lease is, again, a 10-year lease at $1 per year and a license for Cleveland Volunteer Fire to access that fire station via easement. If the Board is comfortable with the language that's in the lease, land lease with the fair association and with the fire department, as well as the, the performance contract, we can do all three of these actions in one single motion, if that's the will of the Board. That would be approving the land lease for both entities, as well as the performance contract with the fair. And I would just publicly like to thank Alex and his team for what I think is, been a really, really thorough process, and I think the beginning to a new, more robust relationship that maximizes that asset for the community. Chair, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, so Commissioners, hold short and make a motion on any of these, because I have a statement to read. But are there any questions for Brian at this point? So, I'd also like to echo what the manager said to Alex and Bobby. Alex and Bobby, it was a pleasure working with you guys throughout the lease draft with Judge Morgan, and it was a lot of work to get to this point. Same with, I see Clint had to leave, the same with the fire department. It was, it was great to figure that out, and so that's going to be a benefit for taxpayers. So, the fact that I serve on the fair board, and I want you all to understand that what I'm fixing to say does not detract from that. I completely support the fair, the fair board, I completely support the volunteer fire department, but I need to read this statement to make sure we're in line with state law. So, in December 2021, the North Carolina General Assembly and I can send a bill 473. This bill prohibits local government board members from making administrative contracts with any nonprofit, which the local government board is a director, officer, or board member. The bill also requires local governmental board members to recuse themselves from voting on such contracts and record the recusal with the clerk before votes occurs on the contract and any related appropriations. So, with that, I also serve, so I'm that Commissioner that serves on the Board of Directors for the Cleveland County Fair, so I will not be, will not be deliberating or voting on any proposed lease or contract with the fair and any related budget toward appropriations. With that, I hereby recuse myself from this matter, and ask the clerk to be sure this is recorded in the, in the board minutes for tonight, and I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Hart.
Okay, Commissioners, you can either do it in a single motion, or however, do we have a motion?
I think we need to do it in one motion, in one, two, and three. I make a motion to accept and do the fair lease, plus the lease with the fire service also.
Go ahead, a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is solid waste franchise agreement. Elliot?
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to present tonight. We're here to talk about the solid waste franchise with the public services. We're nearing the end of a, of a process that we've been going through with looking at the solid waste franchise moving forward. So, this is just a reminder of where we've been. In February of 2021, the Board directed staff to analyze the exclusive franchise of solid waste collection versus open market. So, this is back February 2021. In June 2021, the Board voted to pilot open-market commercial collection in unincorporated areas of the county, and there was a focus on, on lowering market rates, waste integrity, and litter reduction. In July of 2021, the county actually did open commercial in unincorporated areas, and we had 18 vendors interested in that, to which the county issued licenses, licenses. So, that's waste collection, other than residential curbside pickup. People were able to directly contract with any approved vendors. In February of 2022, the commercial analysis report was presented to the Board, and at that same meeting, the Board directed staff to issue an RFP for curbside collection of residential solid waste. That RFP process happened this spring, and in May, the Board reviewed the RFP submissions and selected Republic Services, in, in, in part because Republic was the only applicant that was able to serve the entire county. And so, we're now at June, we're, today's June 7th, and staff have, so, so at the May 17th meeting, the Board directed staff to proceed with awarding a franchise. We're here tonight to do the formal process of doing that. And so, before we get into the awarding of the franchise, I have some code amendments to present to you, to our solid waste ordinance, and so there's two solid waste updates, the amendments to the Code of Ordinances, and then the proposed franchise. I'll be pausing for action, or I'll be pausing to request action on the code amendments before moving to the proposed franchise. And I'll be explaining what those are and why we're, why we're doing it. So, as far as I can tell, and somebody may know better than me, the first modern solid waste ordinance that we have recorded is, was adopted in 1989. Other than solid waste being removed from the Health Department in 2020, and potentially some other changes here and there, there are a lot of provisions that have not been updated since 1989 or the early 90s. And so, we've made a lot of changes. We've made, we have this licensing going on, we have franchises that are for residential curbside, and so the goal tonight is for the licensing and franchising to align our ordinance with, with our practice. So, right now, on the left, that's the current solid waste ordinance, or the portion of it that we're talking about. It has one division that just talks about general regulation of solid waste, so anybody driving around, don't dump trash out, those kind of things, and then it has a Division Two that is licenses for solid waste collection. And the way staff have proposed to reorganize this portion of the ordinance is to have Division One, which is general regulation, applies to you, me, anybody here. Division Two, which is the licenses for commercial collection, which is, I'm a business, I want to have somebody come pick up my trash, I can choose whoever I want. And, and then Division Three is franchises for commercial residential curbside collection. So, just trying to organize it, make sure that you can see on the left, the licenses and the franchises might not be clearly differentiated, and we just want to make clear that we have licenses and we have franchises. These are different things. These are the, just some examples for you of the amendments to Division One. State Department of Human Resources doesn't exist anymore, we need to replace that. Delineating franchise versus a license, and then making clear that we have a solid waste director. We've made clear that the solid waste director is authorized to enforce portions of the ordinance. There is a provision that says that if for any reason there wasn't a solid waste director, the county manager would have authority to do that. But again, just trying to make it more clear for anybody who goes into our ordinance, how things work. So, that's Division One. Division Two is the licenses, and this is going to sound familiar, because this is something we've looked at before. So, the solid waste director can issue licenses for commercial collection, transportation, and proper disposal of solid waste from commercial, industrial, or business facilities. And then also, those licenses can be for the commercial collection, transportation, and proper disposal of non-municipal solid waste from any facilities. And what that means is that, you know, your residential curbside pickup is going to be through a franchise collector, but if you have a fridge, if you have yard waste, if you have something like that, you can contract with, with someone who you choose. The license takes the form of a solid waste collector agreement. It's an agreement where they have to say, we have insurance, our vehicles are up to par, so that if they don't do any of that, we can pull their license. Non-exclusive, meaning there's no limit. I believe, right now, there's 18, something like that. And they're revocable if the licensee violates the agreement or the county's ordinance. So, Division One is just general updates to the rules that apply to everyone. Division Two is saying, this is how our licensing process works. And then Division Three is just talking about the exclusive franchises, and says that the county can issue exclusive franchises for residential curbside solid waste collection. Solid waste director may solicit applications at the appropriate times through the, something like the RFP process that we did, and the Board of Commissioners sets the terms of the franchise. So, that's a lot of information I just put out. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the code amendments.
All right, thank you. Y'all, Board members, do you have any questions for Elliot on the amendments to the Code of Ordinance?
I agree, this is a big change from 89, so it's, it's a lot more clear, I think. I can't think of anything that would make it more clear.
So, with that, yeah, yes, we need a motion to approve the amendment to the Code of Ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no.
Thank you. We'll now move to the second item. This is the franchise with the public services, that the Board directed staff to proceed with putting together. So, it's, it's for residential curbside pickup throughout all unincorporated areas of Cleveland County. The base rate is $25 a month, billed quarterly. That's subject, as mentioned in the RFP, that's subject to annual adjustments for CPI or an increase in the county's tipping fees. The reason for the rate being tied to the increase in county tipping fees is because the franchise mandates that they have to use the county's landfill to dispose of waste. This is a five-year franchise with an option for a one-year extension, and either party may terminate on the third or fourth anniversary of the agreement's effective date by providing notice. And that's a, and I'd also be happy to answer any questions about the, about the franchise.
Thank you, Elliot. With that, Board members, are there any questions in regards to the franchise agreement with Republic? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, that says first reading.
Yes, sir.
Do we got to come back?
The motion tonight is to acknowledge the first reading of the franchise. There's a statute that says you read them twice, so.
I would point out, at your next meeting, it'll be on the consent agenda for the second reading.
All right, so the motion should be first reading of the proposed franchise agreement?
I'll so move.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. All right, motion's carries. Thank you, Elliot.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is board appointments. The first one is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Yes, Board, you have the list in front of you. At this time, you will need to appoint four people to serve a two-year term set to expire June 30th, 2024. Everybody on this list has been vetted by staff and vetted by the Board of Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. As you know, you have to meet certain criteria, and everybody on the list meets the criteria to serve.
I would like to recommend Joel Shores. Can we do them all at once?
Yes, ma'am.
Omar Porter, Stacy Spicer, and Sandy Hammer.
Second.
So, before we, I just have one question for clarity.
Yes, sir.
So, you stated they were all vetted, so how did we vet the second one if no occupation was provided?
We got the information from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. They, he is where, he has to finish completing his application just to show his appointment, but they have all of his information sent it over.
We have a motion and second to approve the four names stated. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. All right, next item is number nine, number three volunteer fire protection district commission.
You have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will need to appoint three people to serve a two-year term set to expire June 30th, 2024.
I'd like to nominate David Austin, James Gibson, and Neil Stroud.
I'll second.
Motion, second to approve the three names stated. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. All right, next board, next board appointment is the Cleveland County Veterans Advisory Board.
Yes, sir. You have the list of applicants. You will need to appoint one person to serve a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2025. When you pick the person to fill the seat on this board, you will have to pick from one of the options chosen on your list.
I'd like to nominate Marty Pendergraph.
Would you like him to serve at an at-large or community business leader? Or a veterans organization rep?
I guess it could be at large.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion for the name, Marty Pendergraph, and a second. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, we're nearing the end of the agenda, so I'll ask the Board, if you have, does anyone have anything they'd like to report?
I do, actually. This weekend, we do have the flyover at the airport, starts at 9:00. You can go take a helicopter ride, a plane ride, go out and support it. And I would also like to talk about, since we were talking about the fair, there was a dairy goat show there this last weekend. Commissioner Bridges and I both went out, and I did not know goats come in so many colors, sizes, and everything. There were some beautiful animals out there. They actually ended up with about 28 exhibitors, and looking over the states they came from, I think the fatherest was Kentucky that they came to enter from. They were from Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia. North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia. I mean, just pretty much everywhere. They had a total of 266 goats. They also had the Crest High School FFA was entered in there. It's it's really a a big dot deal, if you've never been. And we have one of the people here that does the majority of putting this goat show together, and that's Ms. Kim Peace, who's sitting out there. And I just want to say, job well done. And it was very, very nice to go see and see what all goes on in our, at our agriculture fairgrounds with our goats. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would like to also thank Kim for all the hard work, and I love the fact that Cleveland County is agriculture, and we really work hard to and strive to keep that heritage. And also, Dr.
Davis.
You were talking about how we all work together. Last Tuesday night, a week ago, just before midnight, there was an accident in Upper Cleveland County that nobody knows about, because we don't have any news anymore. But you'd probably be interested to know that there was a a truck that had about 80 cows on it that had a wreck and overturned. And a call was made to Cleveland County Communication, and there was immediate response by multiple organizations. And I would just like to have a shout out and say thank you to these people. They need a little bit of recognition. The Lawndale Fire Department, Cleveland County EMS, North Carolina Highway Patrol, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office, the landfill was involved, the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, Vale Veterinary Clinic, Shelby Livestock, Dr. Stephen Matthews and Shelby Body Shop. There were just many, many people come together and took care of this, which was a very bad situation. There was no loss of life, except for cows. And you can imagine having to put put them down and chasing them through the woods and and taking care of a very bad situation. So this is an instance where so many people come together and took care of a very bad situation, and I just appreciate it.
Anyone else? I attended the Memorial Day Service for Cleveland County, which is at Cleveland Memorial Park, also the one at Kings Mountain. They were very well attended. Anybody that hasn't attended, you'd enjoy going to them. And we had the following firefighters memorial since the last meeting. So these, these are very honorable meetings and get-togethers. Appreciate everyone that attended.
I'd like to bring attention to the fact that today is D-Day, and all those folks that stormed the Normandy Beach that day that lost their life is one of the reasons we still have a free country to live in, so.
Yesterday.
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 Is it that?
Yesterday.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I'm behind a little bit.
It's still important.
Still important, remember.
Yeah, still important.
Staff, have anything to report?
Yes, sir.
All right, with not, if that, if not, with that, we're at the end of the meeting to adjourn. So our next meeting, the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners, will be held on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, beginning at 6:00 PM here in the commission chambers. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.